That some folks entered multiple email addresses when they were having trouble. And so what we did Monday, you would have all received an email from me explaining the situation sincerely apologizing for the technical difficulties because we spent all weekend actually stress testing the portal. We knew that there was going to be great demand because we did so much outreach between April 21st, when the decision was made and when the portal opened. And then there were two emails that went out to applicants that had submitted, that had applications that were submitted and completed, reconfirming that, and then another email to those folks who were unable to complete their application for whatever reason, providing technical assistance, support, information on how they could get all of their documents and everything uploaded. And the portal for the backend so that folks can complete their applications is open through five o'clock today. We're anticipating the need. If you, if you strip out multiple emails from one business, if you kind of back it all out, probably it will need in excess of 15 million countywide for those who completed the application and are qualified. So the need is great. Moving on to the next slide. Thank you. So the way that the review is done, the San Mateo Credit Union has, it's called the San Mateo Credit Union Community Fund Staff for Eligibility. It's really the folks at the credit union who review mortgage, loan, business, all types of business line of credit. Those are the folks that are reviewing all the documents that are coming in for this because there's a set of documents that folks have to provide. They have to show payroll records, they have to show bank statements, they have to show the business license, they have to show profit and loss. So all of this had been reviewed by the county council because we were very cognizant, we didn't want to be giving money that would not be used under the terms of the grant. So all eligible applications are funded in order of receipt. So when someone entered their email on Monday into the system, that first touch at the application is what is timestamps and the, and the application, whether it was completed or not on Monday, it's prioritized according to that timestamp. So the grants are allocated based on the source of funding. The first million again per jurisdiction countywide and then cities that have allocated funds specifically for their businesses get allocated next in the queue. When the funding is exhausted, the allocation seemed eligible remain in the queue because then that allows us to go back to each community and say, for example, I'll use your neighbor, Redwood City. So Redwood City has an initial 11 grants based on population. They contributed 300,000. That's an additional 30 grants. The need in Redwood City is beyond 43 businesses. So we would be able to go back to the city and the community actually and say, if, if you are interested in saving additional small businesses and helping them get through this, here is where the need is. And then the grants are issued by the San Mateo Credit Union Community Fund. The dollars that are being raised under the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, the small business portion of that will come back to the credit union for distribution because they are receiving their certification for 501(c)(3) nonprofit status. So we can pull that money out of the community foundation that has been specifically earmarked for small business. So if we move to the next slide. So here is the funding. So the city pledges you see on the left, Burlingame, Colma, Daly City, last night Milbrae and Woodside both came in with amounts, Redwood City, San Carlos, San Mateo. We've done informational presentations to Belma, East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, Pacifica and San Bruno, and then under consideration is your council this evening. So if we move to the next slide. So we were extremely successful in our outreach and this slide shows all the methods of outreach that we did between April 21st, when the Board of Supervisors voted to follow this process and April 27th, when the portal opened, hence the 2,800 in applications. So if you move to the next slide. The application facts were in five different languages. The application itself was in English, Chinese and Spanish. So my ask is how can you help? It's to assist us in allocating or helping to raise additional dollars. So I want to thank the mayor, the city manager and the council for your attention. Happy to answer any questions and thank you very much.
Okay, I have a question, Roseanne. When, what constitutes a grant going to a recipient in a jurisdiction? And, and what I mean by that is, is it where that potential recipient, that small business is based or where it, you know, where it headquarters are, where it operates? What defines that?
Where it's based, where it's actual, I mean, so it's a, for example, Serenity Day Spa is on El Camino in the city of Atherton. And so I think about that as a business. So I, you know, I'm thinking about a Redwood City business, any of the restaurants.
So it has, the business has to have a brick and mortar location and then it sounds like it's what it would consider its main place of business is.
Yes.
In the area. Okay. And can we find out how many applications have been made from someone that says that they're based in San Atherton?
Yes, and so at, at the end of the day today, between tonight and tomorrow, we will have a better sense because what the credit union wanted to do, well, actually both what Flashlight, who's the portal receiving the applications and the credit union, we wanted to get all the unfinished applications and paperwork in so that the credit union underwriting team could start reviewing the documents. And then many of the cities that have contributed would like to know the numbers of businesses in their community that have both applied and are qualified as well as businesses that may have applied but not qualified.
Yeah.
To kind of understand that. So I'll be able to provide that. I just don't have that information right now.
I understand. So you'll be able to provide that tomorrow, is that right?
As soon as they, as soon as they're able to, the goal was to try to finalize all the applications today. We're waiting for, I'm actually watching my computer to see if anything has come up from Flashlight, the company that's actually sorting through all the technical questions.
Okay, and then the final question for me is the, just to confirm, the dollar amount for the grant is $10,000?
Up to $10,000, yes. And the reason that that was landed on, we looked at grants being given, given by the community foundation, Silicon Valley Strong, the city of San Francisco, the city of Seattle, city of LA, Facebook, Salesforce, and all the grants were in the $10,000 range because it looks at a business's ability to pay payroll, rent or mortgage, health insurance and operational needs. And it was really designed as a hand up, not a handout, to help the business get through the shelter in place situation and be, be a viable business as you're coming out of it.
Great. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Hi, Roseanne. A question.
I talk to them every week.
We have very little, obviously, commercial type operations like the Knox School, but we do have a lot of people that may only work in town at the construction industry, gardening industry or others. Is there an avenue for those people that, you know, have been out of work for a period of time and that may not go back to work for a while?
So that would be through, so San Mateo County Strong has the buckets for individuals and families and some of those folks would fall into that category. It also has the nonprofit, both social service side is, as well as what we're calling kind of frontline essential workers. And those grants are being handled through the county's core service agency. So again, coming back to San Mateo County folks that, that work here and live here and so those funds are separate from the small business grants.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one, Rick. Maybe more than one. It relates to sort of the, the goal of the program. And it goes, I guess my question is, we have almost no commercial activity and after we do some, we've, you've been asked us to make a, a grant. Is the thought that the grant would go to other, other, others in the county, you know? And by the way, this is a good goal, not a bad goal, but would go help others in the county? Or is the thought that we would be tailoring something that would help commercial activity in Atherton itself?
So the, the goal for the city donation, so Atherton under the initial 1 million has allocated one grant. If, if there were more qualified businesses that filled out the, the application and were qualified, any funds from Atherton, I think it's a $15,000 amount on your agenda. So that provides another grant and a half for another Atherton based business.
So Roseanne, so I got it. That sounds like every penny we give would stay in Atherton, is that the goal?
Yes, yes. That, that actually is the goal. And when I, when I presented to other councils, like Milbrae last night, they allocated 100,000. So they'll have 10 additional businesses that would be helped in Milbrae on top of the, the million from the county and what I think Milbrae has three out of that, three grants out of that. So the goal for city funds is that it's directed to businesses in your community. And one of the things that came up on the Woodside Town Council meeting is they allocated 80,000 and they said, but if we don't have eight qualified businesses, can the money come back to us? And I said, yes, the money can come back and/or you can direct it as, as you'd like. But I want to be clear, the money asking from Atherton is for Atherton.
Okay, Bill?
Roseanne, thanks for the presentation. So, you know, I, I would think that if, if we don't spend the money, then as you said, we can allocate it back to a general fund or to one of our neighbors to where our people are shopping, isn't that correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And I will tell you, the need is great. So that would be deeply appreciated, I'm sure, for the businesses in Menlo Park, Redwood City, wherever you're shot, it's, it's for San Mateo County. So the 20 cities, it's also North Fair Oaks, the coast side.
Yeah. All right, all right, great, thanks. Appreciate it. That's how, I thought it was working, but I just wanted to verify. Thanks.
Elizabeth?
Through the mayor? Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Roseanne, for a great presentation and thank you for leading this effort to San Mateo County. It's really a wonderful thing. I think it's really going to be critical for us to understand how many businesses there are located in the town. I mean, I, I really, I'm surprised to hear you say that Serendipity Spa on El Camino is in the town of Atherton and is a town of Atherton retail, you know, service business. We know obviously that Knox Play School is within the town because they're within our park and hopefully they've made their application and are in the queue for receiving a grant because it's, as you say, the need is great. So I think this is wonderful. It really is an amazing project for San Mateo County and others to be doing. And I like the way you phrased it, it's a hand up and not a handout. We own some retail commercial properties and today we had calls from three of our retail tenants saying, please forgive our rent for May and June. And of course, we've already worked with them for April and of course, our lender doesn't give us any relief. And so it's, it's, but you know, these are restaurants, small businesses that without a hand up, they're not going to be able to get back on their feet, say by June or July, August. So when, you're looking at your computer now, when will we know? And do we have a sense of how many businesses there are in Atherton that could use a grant like this?
Councilmember Lewis, thank you very much for your comments. And as soon as I have the information between Flashlight, the technical piece and the credit union, so we know the, the kind of, the whole universe of businesses throughout the county because once we have all the businesses that have been, that have fully submitted applications, and I'm not saying qualified, I'm saying submitted, then they can make sure that the queue follows the, the list of who entered their email first and then we can geo, the credit union is already set up to separate each of the businesses as they've identified themselves through a business license to the specific city. So I'll be able to answer that. And I apologize if I spoke out of turn about Serenity Day Spa because I was told they're in the town of Atherton, but I guess a business license would prove it. Their address says Atherton, but it, it might be unincorporated San Mateo County. So just kind of, I don't, and it's just, one of the things I want to be clear with the council members and your city manager is the application portal is closed. So if there is a business in Atherton that did not apply and we can't look at any documentation, any underwriting or that, then the, the businesses from Atherton that did apply would, and qualify would have the opportunity to access the funds.
I have one follow-up question.
Roseanne, there are lots of businesses, both north and south of Atherton on El Camino Real that give an Atherton address but actually aren't in Atherton. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
So my follow-up would be, if there, if there are other businesses such as the Play School that could, that are in Atherton that could qualify for a grant like this and did not get their application in for whatever reason or do not get it approved and, and our 15,000 that we're kind of talking about tonight, if there's more than that, there, I think we might think about a discussion of going out to our residents, you know, if, if we don't feel that as the town we can increase that, you know, like Redwood City made a contribution of 300,000, but Redwood City.
Worst of questions.
Bigger and richer than us. But am I making sense?
Is there a question?
I guess the question is, would we as a council want to not make a decision on a specific amount tonight and wait until we have more information and then also maybe put a call out to, you know, private residents for potential fundraising effort to help?
Okay. Sounds like a comment, George.
Could we increase the amount at a later date?
That's a question.
Yeah, thank you.
I think I had two questions there, Mayor DeBoya. I think I had two questions there.
Let's deal with the one we know as a question. Roseanne, is it possible to increase the amount at a later date?
Yes, you can of course increase the amount at the later date. As I, as I said, I'll have information in, in the next, you know, as soon, as soon as I possibly can, I would give you the information about how many businesses qualified. If you were to choose to direct funds to a business that didn't, that didn't come through this process, that is a, that is a council decision, not San Mateo County Strong. But we'd love your help raising additional dollars for businesses throughout the county that, you know, the funds will be used up pretty quickly.
Right. Thank you. Okay. Elizabeth, did you want to state a question?
No, I'm fine.
George has got a question.
I do. Roseanne, just for clarification on, on the universe of available applicants, two examples. One might be a, a professional landscape service that has a business license operating in town and has a brick and mortar store or location in Menlo Park but operates in town on properties. The second is a small, you know, three or four person construction company that might do some remodeling type activity in town but has an office in Redwood City. Are both of those eligible applicants in Atherton?
So typically the, again, the location of where their business address and where their, and you brought up an interesting point about having a business license to be able to do business in Atherton, but a physical location in Menlo Park. So one of the things that we've asked the underwriting folks is to flag situations like that. So then if we do have geo-targeted money, we could sort through it with the agreements of the municipalities that would be involved. It's not a complete answer, but it is, it is something that we are thinking about and we know that these questions are coming up with the underwriters because the question on sole proprietors had come up and we had to clarify that. So a sole proprietor with W4 employees, so you could be a business entity as a sole proprietor and just you, those do not qualify. But if you're a sole proprietor for tax reasons, but you have W4 employees on a payroll system, yes, they do apply as long as they're under 10 FTE or under 2.5 million in gross annual revenue. So we really had to clarify that.
I had a question, Rick.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. I missed that.
That's okay. Roseanne, so when you're about to make a grant, and I realize it goes through the credit union, is there any coordination, I guess to make sure that we have a business license and that they are either, they're doing business in town or they're, or they have a location in town like the Play School or whatever? Is there any coordination with say, the city manager to just, so we know what we're doing and make sure that it is a legitimate business in town?
So what the credit union is doing is, is they're reviewing all the documentation and if they have questions regarding issues like that, then they circle back to verify with the town, with, wherever they have a question on the paperwork, because some of, they try to verify it through their means. And because the underwriting process has just started, they're, they're sorting through, you know, they have the checklist, did they provide the bank statement, did they provide tax returns, did they provide a business license? And so they're trying to see what's missing, what they need clarified and who they contact about the clarifications, whether it's the issuing entity, whether it's a bank, whether it's a city. So councilmember Widmer, I'll have more information, but that's kind of how they've explained it to me because these are people used to dealing with underwriting and so.
So I do have kind of like a follow-on question then, because like a construction company, there could be a construction company in San Jose, for example, but they do business, they, you know, they do some construction here in Atherton, they do some in Menlo Park, they can do some in Redwood City. Can they legitimately apply in all of those, all those communities? Because I don't think that that's, that's not what the intent was of, for example, a council saying, we want to keep our businesses alive and we want to give them a hand up where they're suffering. And, and if somebody can just apply to five or six, I'll just take a shot at every one of the communities. That just doesn't sound right to me.
No, that is absolutely not the intent of the grant whatsoever. And with bank statements, with tax returns, that's where you get the address of the entity as to where it exists. So I recognize that you're asking, they could have a business license and do business in multiple cities, but when the credit union looks at the tax return, there has to be an address of where they're operating out of. And it, it goes with the tax return, with the payroll statements, with any fran, I already mentioned tax franchise asset, I'm just like mentally going through my head. So just a business license isn't enough paperwork.
Okay, all right, great. That, that answers my question. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Anthony, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for comments.
Wait, it looks like Greg Conlin just raised his hand. I'm going to unmute him now.
Okay.
Mr. Conlin?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Say that I was at the Board of Supervisors meeting yesterday and they went through this program and they had over, I think over 1,200 applicants and they're only going to have enough money for 100. So there's already 10 times more at the county level. Now, the city level, I, I missed the first part of her presentation, so I'm not sure how she's dealing with the cities. But the county, they don't have enough money except for 100, $10,000 because they're only putting away a million bucks. So I thought I'd just let you know that.
Okay. Is there any other public comment?
I have nothing.
Okay. Elizabeth, did you have a comment?
No, is, am I still on my hand raised?
No.
No, I was just following through on your question.
Now you're making fun of me and that doesn't feel good.
It's respectful. I want to make sure you get your comment in. Does anybody else have a comment? Bill?
Yeah, so, you know, as I, as I mentioned, you know, I think that it's, it's important that, that we support this and, and also send a message to some of the other communities that we have very few businesses really in town comparatively. And I think really every community in, in the, the San Mateo area should be contributing to this. I feel very strongly about it. As we've discussed many times, our people shop in Menlo Park or go to restaurants there, same with Redwood City and elsewhere, might go to the movie theater up in San Mateo, you know, so we are, we're part of a region and I think that we may want to, after we see the list of how many companies have applied and, and George can kind of verify that they are actual town and, and also Roseanne would verify it through her, her sources that these are legitimate applications that are for legitimate companies here in town. You know, then I think that we can always decide to add more, but I, you know, I'm in favor of moving forward with the, the amount that we have right now and, and even if, if we don't need to spend that all within our, our community, I think we have an obligation as a good citizen to participate. And if we can get more money later or, I know that Anthony is, you know, had been putting it in the newsletter, you know, ever since it first came out, I, you know, I forwarded that to George and Anthony and they've been putting it in the news, in our, in our newsletter. I think that if we could do something extra to get some, some residents to also participate, I think that that's great. But I'm in favor of moving forward with the 15K with the potential that maybe we'll add some later after we understand what the true potential is. That's my comment. Thank you.
I agree with Bill.
I'll make a motion.
I agree with Bill and I will second Bill's motion.
I don't think we're ready for a motion quite yet, guys.
Sorry, Mike.
That's okay. I mean, I, I think I'm going to end up there. I realized I had a question for George and by the way, I agree with everything that, that Bill said about we're part of a broader community and that's great and I do agree with that. The, the question for George is, am I looking at this properly if I assume that dollars we give in here are dollars that we will end up borrowing? Because any extra money we have is going to go to the Civic Center, to the extent the Civic Center's not completely paid for, we're going to borrow that, that difference, that delta?
The money comes from somewhere, yes. So it's either going to come from our unallocated fund balance, we would just move it over from there or, and that money is, while I say unallocated, we're going to be using that eventually for the town center project. But we do have reserves and we have operational reserves and emergency reserves. So it could come from there, the council could direct specifically where it comes from. Or, you know, there's probably some savings over the course of the last month and a half or so that we didn't do a capital project or an improvement project and we postponed it to next year. 15,000 is not a lot, that could be probably covered in the current budget.
Yeah. Okay, that was sort of my assumption. And then if I could submit, my comment would be, I agree, I think with the amount of 15,000, if it gets to be a lot more or more, I would start to have reservations because there are trade-offs with everything we're doing. We should be transparent about those trade-offs.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I agree.
So if there's nobody else, I'm gonna make my same motion again.
I will second that.
I agree with Mike. Bill, can you repeat, or Carrie, one of you, can you repeat what exactly-
My motion was that we would, that we would approve the $15,000 with the understanding that after Roseanne and the San Mateo Credit Union and their staff get us more information, we may choose to go do something else, but we would start out at the $15,000 level. And I wish that we would do that today.
Let me ask a question of clarification. Is the motion that the 15,000 first be targeted to approved Atherton applicants similar to what Woodside did?
Yeah, and I think that that's what Roseanne said. There's the, our portion of the million dollar, the initial million dollar grant plus this sits on top of that. So she said that we would be able to fund, at this point in time, more than one applicant.
25,000.
Right, that would enable three applicants, it sounds like.
That's how I understand it as well, so I will second that.
Okay. Any comments on that motion? Hearing none, Anthony, can we take a roll call, please?
Widmer?
Hi.
Leest?
Hi.
Lempers?
Hi.
Lewis?
Hi.
And Mayor DeGolia.
Yes. Okay, we're now moving on to item number four.
Mayor DeGolia, I just want to say thank you to the council, thank you to your city manager, and I will circle back with more information. So thank you for inviting me to join the meeting today.
No problem. And thank you for your excellent presentation, Roseanne. It was very thorough.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Robert?
Robert? Okay, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, last month, I say earlier this month, the council acted to waive the grant for the month of April for the Knox Play School in consideration of the mandated closures related to the shelter-in-place order. The Knox Play Schools has been closed beginning mid-March and is currently closed. The shelter-in-place order is associated with public schools has extended that closure through the end of the school year. Susan Knox has made a request to continue that waiver and pursuant to the directive that we got at the April 1st meeting. You had asked that we come back to you as we approach the end of the month. And so what you have before you is a staff report kind of outlining the various orders that have been issued, as well as a copy of the letter request that we have received from Susan Knox. And just a couple of additional items is that her employees have been notified that they will be laid off effective tomorrow. And it is not anticipated that she will reopen before the end of the school year. We have the new order that was issued today. It does allow for limited childcare activities and it's not clear whether or not Susan Knox and the Knox Play Schools comply completely with what the order indicates. And so we have Susan Knox available on the line to answer any questions, and I'm available as well.
Great.
Widmer? Questions? Yeah, I have my hand up because somehow I got made a co-host and I don't think I should have been, but I can't raise my hand now as a co-host.
Yeah, I don't see it, but go for it, Bill.
Okay, so one of the things was that she indicated the summer camp, and as you know, the shelter-in-place was amended for summer camps and daycare activities for people who are working in what's called essential businesses or open businesses that have now been reopened. And that begins on Monday. And so I was wondering whether or not the school could reopen from that standpoint to cover the, to start covering some of the costs and possibly avoid the layoffs. And then also with regards to Susan's email and the information that's in the staff report, I'd like to really have a status on grants and loans that she's applied for and whether or not she's contacted any of our elected officials, either at Sacramento or even, as you know, Rick, you know, Jackie Speer and Anna Schu's office also are trying to help people. So I'd like to know the status of what she's doing to help herself. And so I guess those would get us started. Thank you.
Great, that's a question for Susan.
That's a lot of questions for me. Number one, I did apply for this SM County Strong grant on Monday, right at 12 o'clock when it opened, and the system froze for 45 minutes, but I did end up completing my application for that by about 1:30 on Monday. So that has been submitted. You know, I had all the documents queued up, it was quite a process. I have, I have applied for the Paycheck Protection Program loan through four different lenders. So four times I've completed that application. I did it immediately. Unfortunately, I banked with Wells Fargo, if you guys have been following that process. So I have yet to receive anything. I was, anyway, it's been, that also has been quite a challenge. And I'm asking for the paycheck, the Paycheck Protection Program has a calculator for you that allows for two and a half times payroll plus an additional 25%, which is insurances and things like that. So I've applied for that four times, waiting to hear on all, from all four lenders. What was the rest of the question, Rick? I'm sorry. Have I contacted any elected officials? No.
Summer camp and operations.
Summer camp and operations. So we follow the school district calendar of Menlo Park School District. We do that, we operate as a school, we don't operate as a full-day daycare. So I follow whatever the Menlo Park schools do. You know, we take the vacations when they take it, we end the school year when they end it. So I'm pretty sure we'll be closed through the end of the school year, which is June 11th. I was hoping to open summer camp, which is separate, on June 15th. I haven't canceled those yet, I've taken some funds for that. If we're unable to operate that, I will refund those funds.
So a follow-on question to that, but since you're allowed to, the opening was that you could do summer camps, so as of May 3rd. So if, in fact, that may be something that might be worthwhile to the parents who-
So the comment, as I read it, was that you can have school now for, if you are serving children of essential workers.
Of all workers, of all workers. That means construction workers, that means city workers, that means, you know, et cetera, all the, all the banks, et cetera, everything is open and will be open.
Right. Could I operate? I guess I could for those people. I mean, I was called, you know, a month ago to see if we were open for children, by the Childcare Coordinating Council, which is a referral agency for the county, if we would be open for children of essential workers, you know, three weeks ago, and we were not, we closed immediately when, when the shelter-in-place went into action. I think there are some child cares that are open. I don't know of any in particular that are. It's complicated.
Yeah, I can tell you, Rick and I are on the same calls with the county and childcare needs come up all the time.
Yeah.
And it's a, it's a, it's a big issue because people are getting back to work or they need to go to work and there's no place for them to have their children looked after.
Yeah.
And summer camp or activities like what you offer, I think would be well, well attended. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, it's, it's very difficult, you know, with the, with the fear out there and the people, you know, we have people that come to pick up activity bags that we make every week for the kids. We make bags with art projects in them for the families to drive by and get them, you know, and we hand them to them with gloves on and masks on and they stay six feet away. And it's really hard for me to imagine at this point that people would drop their children off at the preschool when they won't even, you know, come in the, in the location. They stand out, they drive their car into the park, they walk to the school, we hand them the bag with the gloves on, and then they say thank you and we stay social distance away and they walk away. So it's very difficult for me to believe that these families would drop their children off into a situation where we would have, you know, with three and four and five-year-olds together, we can't keep them apart and it's, it's, it's just, it's hard for me to imagine that they would bring their children at this point. Maybe in a month, I'm hoping in, by June 15th, they might want to do that.
Well, it sounds like you're not planning to open before that anyway, because that's when the summer camp-
Yeah, correct.
Elizabeth, did you have a question?
I don't.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Hi, Susan. Question, have you polled your workers or your existing parents to, one, see if, one, the workers will come back to work, or two, the parents that have had kids in and their interest in returning and when that possibly would be?
I have not done an official poll of those topics because this just came out. But I have talked to a few, like, I've talked to my staff, they're, well, they're now going on unemployment.
Right.
So you all know that preschool teachers don't make a lot of money and they're gonna make money on unemployment somewhat, but, so I don't know how to entice them back at this point with the fear still out there. Some of my families has, have said to me, you know, thank you for all the things that you're doing right now, but they're not quite ready to send their kids. I haven't had anybody say, oh, you know, when are you gonna open? We want to send our children. They're asking me what, what my plans are for summer camp at this point.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, yeah, let me, if I could, Rick, ask one additional question, Susan.
Go ahead.
Should you be successful with getting any of these grants or, let's say, the SMC Strong Grant or whatever? If we were to grant you any relief for this month or any subsequent months, would you be willing to pay us back?
Um, I mean, sure, I'll do what, do what you ask, but, I mean, I am in a lease, obviously, through, through August, so I am bound to that.
No, my question is, is that if, if we say, let's, we relieve, we relieve you of your obligations for, say, let's say, for practical purposes, May, which is what the request is.
Right.
And SMC Strong now gives you a grant.
Right.
Would you repay us the, what we relieved you of?
So the, so the rent is 73.69 and the grant is 10,000, right?
Yeah, and so you would give us the 73.69 back.
I mean, sure, if that's what you-
That's what the question is. I, yeah, my, you know, I mean-
I mean, of course, sure.
Yeah, it's not supposed to be an enrichment thing, I just wanted to ask your opinion as to whether or not if you were, are successful in getting any of these grants, are there, are you amenable to provisions that say, yeah, I'll pay you back because it's not to be enriched, it's to just be helped through this?
Right, sure. I mean, if that was the, if that was the stipulation, then yes, I would, of course.
Let me just see if there's any other questions from anyone else on the council. And hearing none, Anthony, do you have any public comment?
No, sir, I have no messages or hands raised.
Anyone on the line that would like to make a public comment? No, okay. Let's bring it back to the council for comments.
I, please, I will start if you'd like. I actually have been keeping a little bit of a close eye on this particular subject because of the needs in San Mateo County. And I understand a facility like Susan's is going to be really in such a limbo state for quite a period of time, just because the employees and the use those facilities are really apprehensive in putting their kids back into programs. I've known other programs that actually have been reported that they thought, you know, they would have 75% of their kids, when they were actually polled, it was closer to 50% with question mark. And that's a very difficult time. Those are difficult numbers to try to grab on to, anticipate and pay rent. And I also think that there's going to be a considerable amount of transition requirements for Susan, so she will be non, or facility in general, but using Susan as an example, that she's gonna have ramp-up time in costs where she won't be generating revenue prior to that. We'll be expending some costs to try to make it, you know, whatever direction safe so that the parents and the children feel comfortable enough to come back to a facility. So I'm comfortable enough with moving forward with the rent waiver request that she has asked for.
So-
Elizabeth?
So my comment is, Susan, number one, I am really sorry that this is happening to you and I can totally understand the, your parents' concerns about reopening the school too soon. And I was actually kind of surprised by the county including daycares as a reopening opportunity so soon. And understand the hardship it is to pay rent. So, but again, and you're kind of in a special circumstances because the town doesn't have a mortgage to pay or any other kind of lending servicing contract for the space that you're in, but we do depend upon the revenue for the management and the upgrade of the park. So that's kind of a hit and miss. So one of the things, and I understand Councilmember Widmer's, you know, insistence on if you do get the grant, and I'm certainly hopeful that you will get this San Mateo Strong Grant, you certainly are deserving for it. And I think that if by some fluke you don't get it directly from them, that if the council can designate that $15,000 contribution we're making, that would go to you for you getting that grant. So I think that's rest assured. So we're really just talking about, did you, you already paid for April, correct, as I understand it?
No. No, we gave a, yeah, we relieved it.
We already, that's right, we relieved that. I'm sorry, I'm getting, because I've had these conversations with my retail tenants today, and as a landlord, we forgave portions of their April rent, I mean, like a gift, but going forward, we'd say we would give them forbearance in May and June for their rent, so they wouldn't have to pay rent in May because they don't have money to pay their rent in May. And we use some of their security deposit to offset that forbearance, but then by the end of a 12-month period, they would have to repay all of that. But like Councilmember Widmer was making, if you received the San Mateo Strong Grant for 10,000, at least you could repay the rent in May. And then hopefully by- And then hopefully by June, you could start taking, uh, application for, uh, your summer camp for July and have some revenue coming in, um, for June. But, um, I'm definitely, uh, in favor of, as Councilmember, uh, Weist indicated, that, uh, we should go ahead and relieve your rent for May. With the caveat that if you get the grant, that that would be repaid.
Yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll give a comment. Um, I agree with that. I, I think that, uh, we did the right thing to waive the rent in April. And I would also support waiving it in May, subject to if, um, Knox Place School gets the SMC Strong Grant, that then they will pay the rent in May.
Okay, I'm in favor of that as well.
Any other comments? Mike, you, you have?
I have a comment. My understa- so we, we, we're going to go through June. All right, by the way, that makes sense. We're going to go through June and then this lease term ends in August with two one-year options that go out from there, correct? Yes, that's, that's according to the report. So that, um, I guess my point is in June, we should, we should think about what's going to happen in August and, and what we're going to do about the, the future. But I, I think I'm in, I'm in favor of going through June.
All right, uh, just for clarity, I think the, the, not the motion, but the discussion on the floor is just for May, not May and June.
Yeah.
With the caveat of the repayment, should she be successful in getting the grant?
But I'll, I'll, I'll restate what Mike said. We should bring the issue of the lease, uh, to the council agenda in June so that there's plenty of time before the August renewal date. Uh, I think, I think that's what Mike was targeting and, and I think that makes absolute sense.
It's so nice to have a mayor translate for me. It just makes life better. Thanks, Rick.
I know, they got lawyers, lawyers.
When he's on your team, you can get it next year.
Well. I did it for Elizabeth earlier and it didn't quite work.
He wasn't quite the same.
I have a motion.
And I will second the motion.
I, I, I guess I made the motion. Okay, thank you, Carrie. Uh, so we've got a motion in a second. Could you just call, the roll call, Anthony?
Hi. He's working on muting himself. There you go.
Weist?
Hi.
Lempers?
Hi.
Widmer?
Hi.
Lewis?
Hi.
And Nagoya, I think I just saw Conlon raise his hand to make a comment.
Well, we voted on the issue, so we're.
Moving on.
But, uh, for Greg, we always have room for comments.
Mr. Conlon?
He's struggling.
Mr. Conlon?
Yes.
Yes, sir, if you'd like to make a public comment, you may.
Yeah, it's academic at this point, but I just, I, I wasn't in favor of, of, uh, her paying back that rent if she got the, because I'm sure, because I've worked with other nonprofits that are doing great tech protection and, and it, these things are not going to make anybody rich. And just to survive will be a challenge, I'm sure, for her. So, but it's too, it's too late now.
Yeah. Okay, um, thank you, Greg. We're moving on to item number five. Uh, this is the subcommittee report. Uh, George, are you introducing that?
I can. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The subcommittee met on April twenty-third. That consisted of councilmembers Lempers and, or Lempers and Widmer, uh, to talk about restart activities. And basically the, the committee looked at all the economic areas of impact in the town. And there's a list within the staff report that identifies a number of those, many of which you've talked about this evening. At the conclusion of the conversation, the subcommittee, uh, thought that maybe we divide these up into three distinct categories. The category one being that we push the county for these types of economic activities to begin soon, as soon as possible. And that was landscape and gardening, construction activity, real estate operations, home occupation businesses and the resumption of normal operations at Knox Place School. And with the county's new shelter in place order effective May fourth, most of that activity is getting close to normal operation. Home occupations are already allowed to continue and they were restated within the new shelter in place order. The same with real estate operations with, with limited protocols connected to both of those activities. Construction activity was also lifted within the new shelter in place order, as well as landscaping and gardening, both with specific protocols, which we can discuss as part of this item. Resumption of normal operations at Knox Place School or similar childcare operations was also lifted in the new shelter in place order with the caveat that it, it's for those individuals that are back at work under the shelter in place order as essential activities for businesses. They are allowed to use those sorts of childcare services. And then summer camps are allowed as well. And then category two, uh, was the, the resumption of activities that we're going to say are going to be consistent with whatever, whatever county guidelines are promulgated. Those were school operations or large school events at, at school sites and non-school events at private schools. Um, those were whatever guidelines the county attributes to them for activities at those particular venues and operations the town would, uh, be consistent with. Category three were those areas where if the county shelter in place authorized the resumption of these activities, maybe the town wanted to take a closer look at them. And the, these were mainly, uh, private special events at private residences or facilities and activities and rentals at the park. And some of the concerns here were if the county authorized private events and activities and gatherings of two hundred fifty or five hundred or less, uh, and then we had corporate rentals or private events of those magnitudes, do we really want that to occur immediately in Atherton? And maybe that's something the town wanted to take a closer look at. One of which, uh, one issue that came up was the horse show in August, which we now know has been canceled for this year, uh, but also corporate events such as Facebook, Google or others at Culver Palmer Park. So tho- those were the categories that were, they were put into. Uh, and then we can talk in more detail about the category one. And that concludes the staff report and the committee's welcome to add more as they appropriate.
Yeah, I, I thought that was helpful, but Rick, if I could, just, I, I think the goal of this, you got all the details. The goal was first to list all the act, economic activity we could think of. And by the way, I'd like to see us keep that because this issue comes up in the future. And then we created these three buckets and, and the council, obviously, my, my view, at least, the council kind of a conversation about which bucket that various activities would go into. Uh, you know, things we want to encourage, things we want to implement as the county approves and things we probably want to be a little more careful about than the county might.
Okay. Bill, did you want to add anything?
No, I think that we've done a pretty good job. Now, I think the, the point right now is for us to decide, did we bucket things properly? And, you know, as, as George pointed out at the very beginning, and when we're going over his initial item was, uh, do we, we had done some work, uh, you know, with the letter to the county on the landscaping. Do we want to just say landscaping open or what type of restrictions do we want? Same thing as, you know, Elizabeth brought up a very good point on construction. We had a pretty good list. Obviously, the county is listed wanting to have a COVID nineteen guy. Uh, you know, there's pros and cons with adding things or making ours more restrictive, but, uh, I think that that's really where the, the conversation is. I would like to ask the question with regards to the county operation, because you're having that discussion before we actually started. Um, and, you know, in the, in the county meeting today, uh, there was a discussion about if somebody wanted to go to a playground or play, you know, a park and pick, have a pickup game with the family members, uh, on, on the, on a basketball court, could they do that? And, and Scott Morrow, who was the health officer, said yes. So the question is, well, what's different about that than having people play tennis? Other than that might not be the same family, but. And, and Mona said that she had a conversation and I'd like to hear what the answer to that is.
Yes, good evening, council. I don't have very thorough explanation for it. Um, it's a little bit nebulous, the same way that, you know, some of the discussions for daycare are and opening that up to essential workers, but not necessarily everyone right now. Um, the discussion from county council on tennis courts, because it seems to be a question of great importance in this area, is that they're treating it differently from basketball. Um, they're saying that the shared, you're, you're literally touching the ball every time. It volleys back to the other side and there's a risk with transmission of the virus. So they, um, even though they did not address that explicitly in the revised order, their interpretation at this point is that, um, it, it's not a recreational activity that should be resumed. Um, and I was told that they should have a frequently asked questions, um, revised list in the next few days that should probably also answer that one.
So, so if I could follow up with that, then, uh, yeah, I don't, I'm basketball. When you're playing basketball, everybody's touching the ball. And, and in our case here, we don't have open public courts. We have closed court, you know, courts that people have to have a key to, to get to. So they're not the same as just a tennis court in the park. Let's say it's San Mateo, uh, you know, at downtown San Mateo. So if you would, next time you're talking to the council, perhaps might be good to get a little bit more clarification in there because I, it just doesn't make any sense that you'd have one versus the other.
No, you're, and I agree with you, but I had not actually heard that basketball was to be permitted, but I was told that they are construing the order to not allow, um, to not allow tennis. And they, the example that they give of something that was allowed was, um, golf because it's isolated and U.P. or things, right?
Okay, thank you.
Although, yeah, that is, what Mona said is my understanding, but I must say, I was confused by the comment about basketball because I'm not sure what the difference is between a pickup basketball game and people being able to use the park.
I, I heard Bill say that heavy people in the same family.
Yeah, that, that's what, that's what was said.
If you're in the same family, you know, you surely.
And that's, the, the county's order does specifically say you can play tennis if it is the same family. Uh, but the problem is, from, from our perspective, is how do we monitor and how do we know how that, how that's going to occur?
So I'm sorry, do we have the discretion then to do that? Because it seems to me that you're assuming that everybody's going to lie to us and we're going to have to enforce that as opposed to assuming that people are responsible human beings and they'll do, you know, the things responsible human beings do.
It's not making the assumption. It's, we will get complaints, uh, and so we have to go interact and, and try and make it discern, yes, that they are the same family, no, we're not giving lessons, yes, we are giving lessons, but it's my daughter or my son, uh, or my brother, we just don't know.
Is it possible, George, that we could post something at the entry point? Because there is an entry gate at the tennis courts that limit, you know, that gives us the understanding this is, you know, permissible based on family members, I mean, some, something outside the doors?
We, we could certainly do that, but, but here's the, here's the bigger, I guess, the bigger issue is, it, it reads sports or activities that include the use of shared equipment or physical contact between participants may only be engaged in by members of the same household or living unit. So yes, you can go play tennis, but do they mean that you can go play tennis at a public court where you're not only just touching the ball and the tennis racket, you're touching the net, you're touching this, the chain link fence as you go in and all those other things?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I, I think you're, you're, you're right on, George. We don't want to be the enforce, the enforcement and I, you know, I, I support your, let's leave the tennis out. I just wanted to know what the difference was and maybe Mona could get that clarification.
Yeah.
She meets with this, the county attorneys as, and they're going to be on our call, Rick.
Right.
Wednesday, so we'll ask that question as well.
I do find it surprising because my read of the revised shelter in place order would seem to prohibit something like basketball outside of, um, household or living quarter. So again, I, it, it comes as a surprise to me that, that someone said that it would be allowed, but I can follow up on that certainly.
It was the doctor, the health, the health officer and, and the county manager.
Okay.
They look like basketball players.
Let me see if there's any other questions from the council on the staff report, including the three categories and the applicability of the new shelter in place order to, um, this issue. Okay, seeing no questions, is there any public comment?
I have no messages, sir.
Okay. Okay. Well, comments on the report?
I, I will say, yes, I do, through the mayor.
Please.
You know, I still have concerns like a lot of people do related to any large gatherings, even with the, um, or lifted to some degree. I also, in the, uh, one of the bullets, um, references the real estate industry. And I know that, uh, the Association of Realtors is chiming in. I would want whatever, you know, is in play that we would follow, what the Association of Realtors legal counsel said is safe for Realtors and home, you know, people showing homes. Because I think that that's a, that's a biggie of in and out type of thing. I think pretty much everything else, we kind of have a pretty good idea about.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, um, I thought that for construction, I, you and the builders around table put together a real good list. Um, I, I can appreciate what the county did and I think that there's some reasons to go with just the county as George had mentioned. But I, one of the things we hear about construction all the time was an issue was the parking. Uh, and, and, and then of course, I thought the, that we had put some really good thought into, uh, and you and Carrie, it put some very good thought into, um, the size of the facility to ensure social distancing. And, and so that led to the size of it and how many people were on site. And I think that, um, you know, I'm willing to go either way on it, but, but I thought that those were two good ads. And, and while I'm not trying to make our more restrictive per se, because as it's been pointed out several times and some calls that I had, you know, our, our construction crews work in Atherton and they work in this town and they work in that town and we don't want to have different rules. But, but I think we need to do what's right for our community. Um, so I'd, I'd like to take the county rules and then add the parking restrictions up and, and, and then also, uh, I, and, and I'm up for consideration on the number of people that we would have on site. I think that those were good ads that you guys worked on and I'd like to see those remain.
Okay. Other comments?
George has hand up, yeah.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, yes, sir. Um, so on those two particular issues, those are really the only two areas with specificity that our guidelines are probably more restrictive than the county's. But the counties get at the number of people on the job site in a different way. And oppose, as opposed to saying, which R says fifteen or less, uh, they, they talk about the staggering of trades, reducing density, uh, sealing off sections of the job site, identifying and strictly, uh, constraining choke points and things like that within the job site. So they get at it a number of different ways that would have the same effect. Instead of counting the people as they come through the gate. With respect to parking, uh, if we do limit parking as we've specified it within our building standards, uh, that we identified, that it has to be all onsite and it can't be in the public right of way, we will prevent, uh, projects from operating in areas of Lloyd and Park or around Ashfield and Maple and those streets because they're just too small to be able to get the job site vehicles off the right of way. And then there are some other areas, uh, that may have constraints as well, given where they are in the phase of the construction.
If I could comment on that, Rick?
Go ahead.
I think that when the parking thing came up and the discussion that we had was that more now than, than before, more people are out walking in the streets. And, and that is their own, because the shelter in place is still in place. And, and that is their own, because the shelter in place is still in place. So people still want to get out and, and use, use the streets for riding a bike and things like that. And, and, and lots of parking on the streets does cause some problems. And so that was the reasoning that I recall that we said we were going to restrict the parking and it had to be onsite. So I'm still in favor of that because the majority of people are still going to be stuck in their homes until the 31st of, of May at least.
Isn't it, I, 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 I agree with Bill to a very large extent because of the transition time. Construction and this construction industry is going to take a period of time to transition to full, full operation anyways. And the communities, Atherton, the people in Atherton are going to be very reactive to the construction industry starting up, period. Just in that fear component and, and a lot of the complaints are, even when we transitioned down, that people were still onsite. If we can alleviate some of this transition stress, and I think the gist of what the mayor and myself got during the, the conversations is there, they know that there's going to be a transition period. It's going to be a period of time before they can amp up. You know, maybe that is, you know, something that would be reasonable for this transition period before we open the gates to full construction site operation, meaning, you know, maximum contractors and parking alleviated because Bill's right, a lot of people are in the streets.
May I have a comment?
Yes, go ahead, Elizabeth.
So I, I understand that, you know, there are a lot of people in the streets, a lot of bikes, a lot of people, a lot of people in the streets because there's no cars. And once we open the gates for landscapers, in fact, today, walking around, there were three or four landscaping trucks just cruising around and going into people's houses. I mean, that weren't there a week ago, but there's going to be so many more and so much more traffic with the construction workers and landscapers and other cars coming in and out, even though we're going to be sheltering in place. So the pedestrians that, like me and people you who've enjoyed the vacant streets, we're not going to be able to enjoy those vacant streets anymore. Cause as it starts to return to some semblance of order and we just have to get ready for that and be prepared for it. I, I just wonder if there's, on the smaller sites, the restriction of, you know, stipulation of having to park onsite, if there could be just a number of cars that can be parked in the driveway or the property right of way, so that they're not encroaching all up and down the entire street. If that could be a consideration.
Oh, let me give a comment on this. You know, one area that we have, and there've been all kinds of issues about that we've really never taken on. We've taken on a whole number of areas in the last few years, but we really haven't taken on the construction issue. And, and the issue of parking is always a big issue with construction. And, and there historically have been lots of complaints about it and we all know that. I do think now is a different situation because people are required to stay home. And I think that they're on the streets because they're required to stay home, not principally because landscapers and construction workers aren't driving around. I think people are much more at home and therefore they're out walking because they want to get out. And I think that is going to continue during this shelter in place for this month. So while I started this, looking at this issue, thinking that really it makes the most sense to be consistent with the county and not to have differences with the county. This may be an issue where we should have a difference. I, I am concerned though, that it ends up being, having an adverse economic impact on those residents who live in smaller locations that, you know, that are, that are in the gates and in the housing near the civic center and, and maybe in some cases in Lloyd and Park where there's smaller lots. And, and if they're rebuilding a house or building a house, they can't, there isn't sufficient parking on those lots. So I'm concerned about that. I don't have a conclusion. The issue.
To, to complicate it a little more, if I could, I, I think for me at least on the construction site, I, I'm perfectly happy to go with the number of people in a way that's consistent with the county, just for simplification and to make, you know, make it easier for the, the companies that are doing business in, in Atherton. But I think this parking issue, as Elizabeth pointed out, it's not just the construction. It's, it's also going to be gardeners and, and all the other service providers of parking in the street. And, and I don't know whether we should be treating them consistently or not. My gut is in the same place as you, Rick, which is it's not fair to say these things can't be done in, in the smaller lots. But it's, it would be nice not to, you know, for pedestrians to be able to walk safely and not have to worry about it. And I also don't know where to draw a line that's enforceable. But I think we should realize there'll be far more gardeners parking than there are construction workers as you walk around town. And right now, what they're doing, by the way, is, is pulling into gates and closing the gates behind them. Because they're not supposed to be there at all and I would, I'd be happy if, if they would continue doing that as we go through this.
Well, they may continue to do that though, Mike. This, maybe that's what they're going to do now and we require that.
Well, that's the question. Do we want to require?
To the extent that they can. To the, I think to the extent that they can pull into the gates and work from inside the gates, I think that's a good thing. Or into the driveway, you know, for the time they're loading and unloading their equipment and doing their, on the smaller lots. Or on, just on the right of way, off of the street in front of that home that they're going to be servicing.
Well, that, that is a, a, that, that's a way to phrase it. That's a little bit more generous than the guidelines we had said before, but I, I think does take into account the gardeners that if possible, that they go off the street onto the property. And if it's not possible, that they park in the right of way on the property, but not on other properties.
Right.
You think that's enforceable, George?
We talking for construction, correct?
Well, I think construction and gardening, it would probably. I don't think it's a problem with gardening because you don't have more than one truck.
Right, not as much. So the requirement is off street on the property if possible. If not possible, only within the right of way in front of the property that they're servicing. That's enforceable, yes.
Yeah. Okay, Bill?
Yeah, and so some of these areas that, that we've mentioned, for example, Lloyd and Park, they got sidewalks. So people are walking on the sidewalks if there's sidewalks, but you know, my, my concern is areas where there's not sidewalks. And, and, you know, I realize we don't want to get too detailed with regards to what, what a regulation is. But, you know, we have to understand also the environment. So, you know, so another area where it's, it's, it's somewhat congested could be like Parker Ave. But Parker Ave has those, has got the very wide public easement. So again, most of, they have, they have parking in front of their homes.
Right, the, the, the bigger issue is going to be the gates and the properties between Fair Oaks and Watkins.
Yeah, I, I agree. Lempersville.
Walnut, I mean, well, you know, Walnut's pretty wide, Maple isn't. But I think that if you had, if, if we were to set up the requirement that if possible, park on, off the street on the property, that the work is being done on. And if that's not possible, park in the right of way for that property and not in any other right of way.
Right, now just, just for clarity, the, the current building permit requirements actually require you to park in the right of way for that property. But you can negotiate agreements with neighbors to allow you to park in their frontage. So what we're saying is you can't have those adjacent neighbor agreements. You can only use the right of way in front of your property, which is absolutely enforceable.
Well, I think the preference is on the property and then in front of the property you're servicing.
Yeah, so this is, this is an amendment to what we already have. And again, we've said that this is, we're going to look at it again after, if, once they lift the shelter in place, then things, there's going to be a lot more traffic anyway. People aren't going to be walking in the streets.
Right, also there's going to be fewer people, right? Because the construction zones are going to be not as, not as crowded, so that'll help. I also would like to see this apply not just to construction and gardening, but to actually all service providers, anybody who's parking on the, on the street.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, but that's not on the agenda right now. Just to clarify though, on the agenda, the new.
I'm sorry, Rick, it is on the agenda right now. Why do you say it's not on the agenda right now?
For it to apply to.
We're talking about all the economic activity in the town, getting it restarted. So I'm sorry, go ahead. How are you going to handle it? But, but I do think we can properly discuss this.
Question. Yeah, fine. I thought we were just focused on gardening and construction, but maybe it applies to anybody who's providing.
Mike, is there a particular type of economic activity we're talking, you're thinking about?
I know that when I walk around, because I'm doing a lot of walking now, I'm trying to take all my calls walking and I'm walking around. It's, it's wonderful, by the way. It's nice. I go by Clay quite a bit, by the way, Rick. But the, the, and, and there are a lot of trucks that park, that park there now. It's mostly gardening, but it's, you know, it's, it's tree trimming, it's, there is a, like a water pressure cleaner that I walked by today, you know, and, and just, there's just people providing services.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on the tree trimming, you know, a lot of times, I mean, it's irritating when somebody is doing the tree trimming and they, they, they park the, the chipper in front of the house that's not being trimmed.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is, I'm sorry, the reason I'm asking is after this meeting, I'll be putting out the, the news flash that articulates some of the restrictions that the town will be opposing in addition to the county's relaxation. And I want to make sure I can itemize some service providers just as examples.
Just for clarity, the, the new county order obviously is allowing Amaroso to start work on Monday on the library.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. Just to comment on the categories that Mike and Bill put together, I think you guys did an excellent job on it. I think as we think about it going forward, that we may have some further addition and refinement. And I absolutely agree that we should see this as a continuing kind of thing because who knows what's going to happen in the fall. This, this whole issue could come back. And I, I think this is good categorization and will help us to target how to treat different commercial activity, different activity.
I echo that.
So do we need a motion, George, or is this direction?
I know, that's just a direction. We'll, I can put this list together as the county shelter in place order evolves. And if something falls into one of these categories, we'll bring it up to the council. Or if there's something the council thinks, like you said, that you want to add to the list, we can certainly do that and have that conversation as well. No actions necessary this evening. It was just directions.
So George, as far as direction, this is going to be effective on Monday, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are you going to be able to get a, a, you know, useful notice of some sort out FAQs or something so that people, people know what's going on?
Yes, that'll either go out tonight or tomorrow morning. And I'll be providing some narrative around it, really for, for Atherton, it was, it was the big two. It was landscaping and construction. Most of the other stuff people were fine with. And, and they love the parking empty. Get walkers in there all the time now. So those will be the two issues that I'll focus on. And the only one that we're really narrowing is the parking issue with respect to construction and gardening and service providers, actually.
Great, okay.
I will say, George, it was like Bay Meadows today at 12:01 for the gardeners because they heard that report and they launched. So you're going to have a busy couple of days.
Well, yeah, I, I spoke with one property owner today who was begging to have some landscaping done. And my response was you could probably schedule it for Monday without a problem if that's what the county's order says. With respect to whether the PD is going to be doing some very heightened enforcement over the next two days. I'm not exactly sure that's going to happen as strong as it was.
I agree with that.
And Greg Conlon has a comment and we can take it now.
What, what do we decide on tennis? What are you going to say on the tennis, George?
At this time, tennis is prohibited.
But Mona's going to work on that with the city, with the lawyer?
We're going to do some further investigation with the county, yes.
But for now it's prohibited.
That's correct.
All right, and I've, I've got a personal situation. When is a large group, it's over 50, where do you stand on that in your backyard or in the park?
County's order says that's still prohibited.
Until the end of May.
Correct.
All right, and that's true for your, your part too, the whole book problem.
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you very much.
So I wouldn't be printing invitation.
Anything you can have is a funeral of 10 people.
That's correct.
Okay, I think we're done on this item. We do have an opportunity for a public comment at the end of the meeting if anybody has a comment. Anthony, do you have any notice of anyone having a comment?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay, is there anybody on the call who wishes to make a comment?
Don't we have an item number six?
We, we do have an item report, just an oral report to Town Center.
Yeah, that's just an oral report, Mr. Mayor, on the Town Center activity. Come Monday, they'll be continuing on the library. Right now they're continuing on the city hall portion. They've been fully compliant with the town's directives with respect to COVID-19. Minor issues here and there, but nothing significant at all. They've been reporting to the building official on a daily basis and building official and/or Steve Tyler from Interwest has been on site every day. We are in the midst of some negotiations as the council is directed with respect to the contract for suspension for convenience and COVID-19 issues. Those conversations are still ongoing. And I'll report out at the next meeting with some detail.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question about financing, if that's included, it's simply what's, what's the schedule for us to figure out how we're going to proceed and what the numbers are likely to be?
So the subcommittee of the mayor, the vice mayor and the chair of the finance committee have an informational meeting with bond council and staff and urban futures coming up on Monday. And on, at the May 20th council meeting, you'll be making a decision with respect to an amount of providing staff some final direction as to which way to go. And then in June will be, because you also have a cash flow analysis coming back in May as well. And then in June, we'll be pulling the trigger on the COP.
And, and has the COVID-19, you know, pandemic situation caused any delay with the need for the timing?
What it's done is it's, it shifted which money is paid first, in other, where the contractor is putting their focus. Because they could only focus on the town hall portion of the project, we're spending those funds first. Because they could only focus on the town hall portion of the project, we're spending those funds first. But we're also spending them at a lesser amount. So it's, we're still analyzing what that impact is, but it's shifted things a little bit. I don't think it's dramatic or significant.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have anything to bring up? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll take that as all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks all.